Good evening, everybody. We're going to open our, the August zoning board meeting tonight. We have three hearings planned and a review of a request for a modification of the comprehensive permit pertaining to La Barren's, the residents at La Barren's. I do need to ask first if anybody present is making a recording of our meeting tonight. The Attorney General wants to know. Lake Cam, of course, is making a recording and this, this meeting will be available for, for viewing at a later time by going to the lakecam.tv website and clicking on the links for the archives. Let me read aloud just for the record. In accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter 30a, section 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the August 20th, 2020 public meeting of the zoning board of appeal shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv, as I said. Now, for anybody who's keeping count, you'll note that right now, we have, to the best of my count, three zoning board members who are present. Dave Curtis is here, John Oliveri is here, and I'm here, and I don't think there's any other members present at the moment. Somebody may show up later. We are short of members. This poses a genuine dilemma for everybody here tonight, with the possible exception of La Barron, because in order for us to transact any business on a petition for special permit or variance, we should have our full five members. At a minimum, we could have four members for a vote to carry, but three votes is not sufficient to carry a motion to either grant or deny any, any kind of a request for a special permit or variance. So we cannot legally vote on any of the three petitions for special permit unless we have a fourth member show up. So having said that, because we have three members and a special, excuse me, a comprehensive permit is, is run a little bit differently, we only need a simple majority, which is three members, for a vote to carry or to be denied for comprehensive permit. That would be a 40B comprehensive permit. We can engage in the La Barron discussion and a vote tonight. And I'm, I think, I'd rather take our agenda out of order and start with the La Barron business, because we can do that, hoping that a fourth member might join us. And Bob, we don't have a, we don't have a normal application from you. The purpose of our business tonight is to hear your request, and then Dave, John, and I will decide if this is a substantial or an insubstantial request. In the event that we decide it's substantial, then we have to advertise and have a formal hearing. In the event that we decide your request is insubstantial, or what essentially would be a trivial request to modify the plans for the development, then if we vote that way, you're free to move ahead. So Bob, I think we'll turn this over to you. And we don't hear you, Bob. No, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
I think I can hear you. Wasn't there a cellphone ad that said, can you hear me now?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
You, can you hear me now, Don?
We can hear you.
Okay. Sorry for the mix-up. I haven't, I was trying to use headphones, but apparently when I put the headphones on, it shuts off the, the microphone. In any event, as the board knows, I represent the developer of the La Barron Hills project, La Barron Residential LLC, and I believe my client Mohammed Aitani is on, has joined us in the meeting, so he's here if anyone has any questions. What you have before you was actually something that was brought to our attention by the residents, in particular Jeff Youngquist, who lives out there. And Jeff came forward and said there were a couple of things that he would like to see changed in the, in the project. There would, and he's claiming that he represents the majority of the representatives who are looking to eliminate the sidewalks on Hybrid Drive, Ironwood Lane, Hutter Way, Bunker Lane, and Wedge Drive, and those are the, all of the, I guess we'll call them the offshoot streets that are off of La Barron Boulevard. And he wants to eliminate the chain link fence that's behind certain lots. These were the original only two changes. And when it was presented to us, I realized that the proper procedure would be, and I, and I think Jeff thought, first of all, attempted to send a letter to the board to raise this question himself. Although it's a valid question, it needs to be raised by the, by the developer. And with a 40B, there was a very specific statutory procedure. You did a very good job of outlining it. And what it is simply is that if we propose any change, whether it is, whether in our opinion it is significant or insignificant, we have to send a notice of project change to the vote, for the zoning board. The zoning board has 20 days to make a decision, one of two decisions. One is that if they feel that the request is insubstantial, they can approve it right there. If they feel that it is a substantial change, then as you pointed out, you would have to have a public hearing with notice through the abutters and in, in the newspaper. So that is what the purpose of this, this meeting is. In, in addition to those two changes, a couple of other things have come up. One that was raised by Mohammed and one that was actually offered by the building commissioner, Mr. Darling. The residents were looking to eliminate the sidewalks on Hybrid, those, the roads that I mentioned. Mohammed realized that he actually wants to add sidewalks, because it, and I'm not sure if he didn't realize it, or what it was proposed, that there was a section of La Barron Boulevard between where the, the apartment complex is and Phase 1 that wouldn't have sidewalk. So in addition to eliminating the sidewalks, he would like to add the sidewalk on La Barron Boulevard, so, which means essentially that there will be a sidewalk on one side of La Barron Boulevard for its entire length. So that was added to the notice of project change.
Bob, just to, just to clarify the sidewalk issue, the, the part that you want to add, will that be joining two other existing sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay.
It will. It will be adjoining to, well, the sidewalk that was approved on La Barron Boulevard, I believe it's from the apartment complex to the, to the new, which will be the new end of La Barron Boulevard, connects that up to the Phase 1 where the duplex is.
Okay.
That sidewalk is already there.
Good, thank you.
So in addition, the building commissioner, Mr. Darling, raised the point that he had several people that had approached him that wanted to put utility buildings, storage sheds on the property. And the problem is, as you know, because this is a 40B, these are small lots, and the setback requirement that was, that was put in effect for the 40B was 15 feet from the rear of this lot line and eight feet from the side of the, the lot line. And the issue is, because they're such small lots, if you had to meet those requirements, you'd probably be putting the shed right in the middle of their, their backyard. So it was at his suggestion that we asked the board to allow a sideline setback of five feet in the side or the rear, but only for one accessory building of 120 square feet of floor area or less with a maximum height of 12 and 1/2 feet. So we added that to our, to our request. Now, what I'd like to do, because remember, this request comes from the residents, and what we basically said to the residents and say to the zoning board is, whatever the zoning board decides is fine with, with Mohammed, with the developer. We think it's a reasonable request, but if the board feels otherwise, we'll accept whatever determination that the, that the board makes. So what I'd like to do and is ask Jeff if he would present a little history as to why he decided they felt they needed the change, and hopefully give enough information to the board to make a decision as to whether or not these are insubstantial changes. So Jeff, would you like to address that?
Absolutely. Yes, I would. Are you there? Can you hear me?
Yep, go ahead.
Yes, with this, the sidewalk issue first, most of the residents, and I'm one of them, that sidewalk is going to be on our side. Basically, the front yard is only 20 feet, and most houses between 20 and 25 feet, and the sidewalk is four feet, and there's another two-foot strip. Everybody has sotted or planted grass right up to the road. Most of the residents in our neighborhood walk around in the middle of the road with their dogs. It doesn't make any difference what we have a sidewalk. There, I can't see the purpose in the sidewalk, other than my son put it on the plan, probably.
Have any of those sidewalks been built?
No, they have not. That's why we decided to ask the residents, if, Don, if you remember right, I think I sent you a petition, and all the residents at the time signed it and said, we don't want a sidewalk.
Okay. What about the fence? The fence issue is really interesting.
Yes. The fence issue is, it's a 42-inch chain link fence. I don't know what it's there for, but a lot of the residents, including me, my neighbor just put up a six-foot plastic fiberglass fence. It's for dog purposes. I'm going to do the same. We don't need a 42-inch chain link fence. All that is a trash collector. If the residents, whoever house, I know Judy on the, and I think she's number 19, she doesn't want a fence in her backyard. She just likes to walk out to the edge of the area. And so is on number, Kevin on number nine, I think Kevin is, no, Kevin's eight, and Sue is seven. They have kind of landscaped the area between their, their backyard and the pond. It looks quite beautiful. If any of you guys ever come out, come out and take a look at it. We're, we're not doing, we're not destroying it or anything. We're just making it nice.
Has the fence, has the fence been installed?
No.
Good.
But certain residents have installed a fence already, their own, because they wanted one.
Yeah.
I'm going to install one too, so, but it, it's for, for dog purposes is what it's going to be for.
Sure. I would guess that the original plan put a fence there thinking that someday there might be kids who would wander back into the, I think there's a pond behind the house, isn't there?
Yes, sir. Right behind my house.
So my, my guess is that the original thought was that this would keep some toddlers away from the water.
Well, I think most, if you look at, most of the residents out here don't have toddlers. I think we're all in this 65 to 75 range.
Great-grandkids, then.
Yeah. I, I don't think there would be a danger anyway. There's no danger. You can, you can walk anywhere out here. So, but it'd be the same as, you have a fence in the glass who wants it, but we, you know, people can walk to that too.
Are there any other residents of La Barron with us tonight?
I don't, I think I'm the only one.
You're the only one.
Yeah, they know. Yes.
So we're deliberating on removing some planned sidewalks, adding the plan for a sidewalk, and eliminating the required fence that's on the plans. None of these have been built yet.
None of them.
Oh, and then, and then there's the question of changing the setback for the sheds.
If, if you look at most of the lot sizes, they're 10,000, 10,000 or less, around 10,000. And when you put the house, the house, most of the houses are between 1,500 and 2,000, 200, 200 square foot houses. When you do that, you're, basically, you're, the amount of area you have out there is, you know, quite small. So if you can't tuck it up to one of the lot, one of the lot lines, it's, it's going to be, you know, it's going to look kind of dumb, to say the least.
John or Dave, do you have any comments or thoughts on this?
Well, I have a couple of questions. One is, what's the name of the street that runs to 79 now?
Oh, which?
The new street they put in.
The street they just put in?
The one that goes out to 79.
Oh, God, I don't even know the name of that. Bob?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, this is Mohammed Aitani with the residences at La Barron Hills.
Yes, of course.
That new, that new street that we have, it's called Country Club Lane, and that one has sidewalk, because it's a main road. If you look at the neighborhood, La Barron Boulevard dissects the neighborhood, and this new addition creates a new entrance to the neighborhood. All the side streets in Phase 1, Eagle Way, Birdie Court, Sandy Lane, they do not have a sidewalk. The sidewalk has always been on the main street and not on side street. And the residents of the new phase said, how come you're adding sidewalks to our side and it's not on the other side? So I said, guys, that's how the plans were approved. I was getting ready to build the sidewalks, when the neighbors, you know, started calling me and sending me emails, and, and, and I said, guys, if you want to take it with the ZBA, please feel free to do that. I'm neutral on this. We'll be more than happy to do what the ZBA decides.
John, do you have any thoughts?
No, I mean, obviously, it's, it's kind of a contained neighborhood, I'll call it, project, and if the folks who live there are fine without the sidewalks, I mean, it's, it's a private, they're all private roads, they're going to be responsible for maintenance and whatnot, so if they're good with it, it seems fine to me.
Bob, there's one very tiny question I have on item three on your letter, which is the setback issue to put, to put the sheds in. We in the past, and I actually, I think John was the, the one who initiated this a couple of years ago, when we began to allow people to put things into the otherwise defined setback, we would put a statement in the restriction that would say that, that the intrusion into the setback does not define a new setback on that property line. Ordinarily, if you have something that is non-conforming because it intrudes into a setback region, that intrusion defines a new setback on that one property line, at least that's the way we look at it. And in some cases recently, when people have asked to put garages or sheds into the setback, we've said, okay, with the understanding that that does not redefine the setback margin on that one property line. Are you with me on that?
Yes.
Would you consider some language in, in that that would, that would add a restriction like that?
Don, can I jump in first?
Sure. Yeah, please.
I, I want to say, I think in the, in their presentation, didn't they say that was going to be within, you know, five feet setback because of the size of the property, but it was for one accessory structure?
Yes, one structure.
So if we limit it to only one accessory structure on each piece of property, you may be accomplishing a couple of things. One, if there's only one accessory structure, it's not going to create a new setback, because you know, I mean, you're not going to have the opportunity, and you're also going to prevent it from, you know, potentially people putting, you know, two, three, four little sheds, which is going to get crowded back there to begin with anyways.
Right.
You just put it on one accessory structure, then I don't know if we need to worry about the setback.
But you could, you could have a homeowner who wants to add a deck, for example.
Fair point.
This wouldn't, this wouldn't apply. The, I understand exactly what you're saying, but I agree with, with John. We're allowing a setback exemption, but only for an accessory building, and, and access to own, and only one accessory building, and we're limiting the size of it. Where did I come up with these, these figures, 150 square feet and, and?
120.
The height requirement? I got it from Nate. Nate suggested that this was a reasonable and the largest size accessory building that we would, would want to allow. So I don't think you need to condition it any further, because it's, it's conditioned that it is, it is only a, an exemption for a one particular sized type of building.
Yeah, it does say that. I think 120 square feet, a 10 by 12 shed, I think that really goes back to the state bylaws. And I think it has to do with, among other things, fire insurance, because you're supposed to keep your lawnmower and your snow blower and five gallons of gasoline outside your house. I, I think that's, I, I think that sheds get a little extra freedom because of that.
Well, you, you had mentioned to me whether there was any exemption from the sideline requirement for a shed of certain size, and far as zoning was concerned, I couldn't find any.
I think, I think the points that you and John made are good points. I don't think we have to change the language at all. Is there anybody present who would like to speak, besides Mr. Youngquist, would like to speak for or against, unless Mr. Youngquist would like to speak again?
No, I'm fine, fine.
I, I have to tell you honestly, I think I'm speaking to John and Dave. I, I don't think there's any reason that we should even worry about these three requests anymore. I think these are trivial, quite insubstantial requests. They're very slight changes to the overall plan that was presented, what, 15 or 16 years ago, I think, and has been, we've reviewed probably four or five times in the year since. This is trivial.
I agree.
If I could make a suggestion, Don, that if, if you feel that way, I, I believe the vote is, is pretty simple. I think it is that the, the changes to the project that are outlined in the notice of project change, that the zoning board feels that they are insubstantial changes. And that's all you really need to say. Then if it's voted that way, I would still prepare a modification to the special permit, but it would be different than, than a, a modification that's as a result of a, a public hearing. But we would just file a modification indicating that these three changes are allowed as insubstantial.
Dave, do you have any comments to this?
No, I, my big thought was that I wanted to make sure that there was the, the sidewalk for that new street, because that's going out to 79. But seeing as how that's already there, then it's, it's a moot point.
Well, seeing as how there's no further discussion, I'm going to ask for somebody to make a motion.
I'd make a motion that we approve the request as insubstantial.
I'll second the motion.
Dave has seconded. Any further discussion from either of you? None from me? All in favor of the motion as presented, please?
We're going to do roll call, right, Don?
John, how do you vote?
Oliveri, aye.
David, how do you vote?
Curtis votes aye.
And Don Foster votes aye. So the vote carries, I appreciate it. Bob, you and I should have a discussion fairly quickly about what you need from me on this.
Yes. I'll send you, I'll prepare a modification and I'll send it to you, which will need to be executed.
Will you be in the office tomorrow?
Yes, I will, in the morning.
If I, if I can find your phone number in the email, I'll give you a call.
Okay, it's in the email.
Thank you.
Don, does that need to be signed at all?
Yes, that will, the modification, Don, if my memory is correct, and I don't have it in front of me, I think the chairman is authorized to sign that.
That is correct. I, I can sign on behalf of the zoning.
I just wanted to make sure we still had that in place.
Right. Good. Okay. I think we're all done with you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mohammed. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed. Let's see, have we been lucky enough to have a fourth member of the zoning board? I see my name listed, I see John's name, I see Kathy, I see Dave. Kathy's our secretary. I don't see Jerry or Kathy. Do you know if we have a fifth member yet?
As I know, you do not. It was just before. I mean, I watched the meeting, the slotting meeting, they appointed one person.
Well, folks, we have three petitions on our schedule for tonight, and we cannot do any business on your behalf with these petitions. We have the, is it the Bougina hearing? Did I pronounce that right?
It's Boujenga, Mr. Chairman.
Bougina. Bougina hearing, Ifradye hearing, and Fuller hearing. It probably is best that we not open them without at least a fourth member, because if we opened, we couldn't decide. If we opened and you presented information, then when we finally did have a fourth and a fifth member, hopefully a fifth member, then you'd have to repeat everything legally, because all members who vote are supposed to hear all the evidence and the information. So it is, I think, to your advantage that we not open these hearings tonight without having a suitable number of members. And I apologize, this is, this is beyond our control, certainly. I, I, I would, I would encourage each of the three of you to, if you have a lawyer you can talk to, to consult with your lawyer, to see about the legal implications of a hearing that's not opened when it's supposed to be opened. And while, while we're sitting here, I can, we can certainly try and answer any questions that you may have at this point, but I think, I think it's not wise to open any of these hearings legally, without a sufficient number of members.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is Manny Boujenga from 33 Shore Ave.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Peter Salino is representing me. Is there, is there any way that we could get the secretary there to see if any of the, any of the board members by, you know, via cellphone or phone, however, we can get a hold of them and just see if they're just running late? I mean, so everybody here, Mr. Ifradyes and everybody else?
Yes, I understand. Let me, let me give you a little more information. We, as of, as of last week, we were down to only three members. The other members had quit and the, had stepped down from the zoning board, and the selectmen had not reappointed any of the associate members. So we only had three members, and as your attorney, I'm sure knows, we have to, we're supposed to have five, and we can have a vote with only four for a supermajority vote. And we don't have that. To the best of my knowledge, one of the associate members was just reappointed, and he may not have been sworn in by town clerk. I keep looking at the, at, at the attendance here, at the participants list, to see if his name pops up. I don't see him. So we only have four members, and I'm not sure that the fourth member is sworn in.
Is there any?
I think you're correct. I, I, I'm more than saying-
I think you're correct. I think, I, I'm more than think, the fourth member has not been, has not been sworn in yet.
So, so, so we don't, Manny, to answer your question, we don't have enough members to legally hold a hearing?
Let me ask you this next question. Since there's only three members on the board, will two members be enough to vote majorities?
No, no, no. We have, we have, we have three members and two empty seats. That's, we have five members, two of whom aren't, don't exist. So I've already, I've, I asked that question of town council. So when we, when we were down one and we had only four members, I asked that same question you did. Could, does a super majority mean three members if you have, if we had only four? And town council said, no, unfortunately, it really means, it means two thirds of five, which is four people.
So with all that said, do we have to go back out to advertising and wait another 14 days?
No, 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 no.
We have to make a motion to continue, Manny.
Okay.
Uh, no, we, we can only make a motion to continue if we, if we officially open it. That's why I'm saying, let's not open it. I would encourage you to look carefully at the, the laws, the state laws pertaining to how long before a, a petition that's been officially submitted, how long before we must hear it? There, I think there may be some loopholes to your benefit in there.
We can discuss offline, Manny.
Yep.
So Don, if I might, is it going to, do we have any idea when the town is going to have enough members to be able to hear these other folks?
Who's speaking, please?
This is Lynn Ladoni in reference to 33 Shore Ave.
Okay. Um, that's a, an excellent question that you should direct the selectmen. The, the selectmen, the selectmen make all decisions with board membership.
Okay. So there is, there is potentially an opportunity where we won't have to wait until the actual next meeting, where we were on the docket for this evening. Maybe the town could have a meeting sooner?
We need to post meetings. Kathy, is it 48 hours, I think, in advance?
Hour is done, but this is something I would really want to check because we're, they're not opening the hearings. They might have to be re-advertised.
Okay, well.
However, we still are under the general, the state of emergency, so there are no deadlines.
When you say no deadline, when you say no deadlines, Kathy, what do you mean by that?
I mean that we have 65 days to open a hearing, but because we're still under the state of emergency for the COVID, those deadlines have been waived until that is lifted.
Oh, this is not.
So after that's lifted, we actually have 45 additional days to hit, to hear a petition.
And for those of you who can hear my voice, if
Don.
If I've done, if I've done a good job masking my frustration with this whole thing, then.
Don.
Yes, sir.
What if we were to open the hearings to kind of get the start date, but go right into voting to continue? We're not voting a finding, but I think we can vote to continue with three. I'm just thinking that'll get the ball rolling. So as soon as the other individual gets sworn in, if we were to say, listen, sometime in the next couple of weeks, we were to, you know, re, reproach to re-advertize. Because if we open the hearing, then we can avoid having to deal with, as Kathy pointed out, having to re-advertize because we just didn't do anything with the hearing. We don't have, you know, we continue hearings all the time. We don't have to re-advertize.
Yeah, that, that is a, that's a, that's a worthwhile approach. We could open it and then continue it. Well, now the petitioner has to agree to continuance.
Correct.
To stop the clock. Kathy, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Now I can hear you. Speak up.
I would caution against that. The email from Amy did not recommend opening the hearings. I don't know if you recall that email from her.
I don't remember that email. Did I get that email?
I'm guessing she probably didn't want us to open the hearings and start for the reason that Don pointed out earlier. Once we start, we get a fourth member on that every individual votes can only vote if they are privy to prior conversations. But if we don't open and continue.
Could that member watch the video and get, I guess, caught up on this? Not have to, you know, put the whole case again?
No, because he'd have to be able to interact.
Understood.
View and whatnot.
Mr. Salino, do you have any input on this?
Uh, not really. I think that it's not wise to open the meeting if we can't put forth our case. I think any decision or relief given in my petition alone could be overturned if we've started to present to, or if we even open a hearing to a substandard board. And by substandard, don't take that personally. I mean, substandard in terms of.
Thank you.
Peter, I, I think Chairman makes a valid point. I guess you can direct me otherwise. But if we start the meeting and just continue it, then it's probably not going to take as long to get back on the agenda as it would if we didn't start the meeting. Is that correct?
You'd be on the agenda.
You're on, but it's a, I mean, it's so tough on Zoom, Manny. We should be talking about this between you and I, but it's, it's not appropriate.
Okay.
As, as the petition is, do we, we don't need to refile or anything, do we?
I don't think you need to refile, but I, but Kathy made a good point. If we're gonna, if we're going to not open tonight, but instead open, what?
That her answer to you? Amy's?
You have it?
Yes, I do.
Can you read it?
Yep. I suggest the ZBA utilize chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020 and not open any special permit or variance until a date within 45 days of the termination of the state of emergency. Hopefully two new members can be appointed in the meantime. If the ZBA goes forward, all applications will need to be deemed denied as a super majority was not obtained. And then the applicant is foreclosed from reapplying within two years.
Unless, unless we specify without prejudice, I think. I think, I think that's our discretion.
That was her opinion, to not open them.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, Don, I don't think in a case such as that, the, without prejudice would apply because there wouldn't be a majority, a super majority.
So the wisdom would be to not open any of these hearings tonight?
And then, and then as petitioners, we, we wait until the next meeting in October? Is that what I'm hearing correctly?
It would be, it would be next month.
Sorry, September. We're in August, September?
Yeah. I know time is different now, but it, it's September.
You.
I really apologize for this. This is not part of our plan. It, I've been on the zoning board, what, 20 years, David? And over more than 20 years, and this is the first time this has happened.
It's fine, fine, fine by me. I'm just, you know, as long as, I just want to make sure that I'm, on my end, if we're going to move forward this way, that I have everything that I need to have covered so that I'm ready come September. That's all.
Don, we should probably, as a courtesy to the petitioners, as soon as we, A, have our fourth member or whatever guidance we get from council, reach out to each one individually or, or their representative and let them know exactly how this will play out going forward with this, to your point, is something that's never happened before.
And I think, and to Kathy's point, I think we have to answer the question if we need to re-advertize.
Yeah, whatever the answers are, get a, get, make it clear and, and take, us take the, or Kathy at this point, you know, take, take the reins and reach out to the petitioners as opposed to them having to chase us. I mean, this is not on us three members. This is on the town. This isn't on the individuals.
Right. Okay, I'm, I'm going to, I think I'm going to adjourn tonight's meeting. Oh, we have minutes to approve, don't we, Kathy? Okay.
Excuse me, just, just to be clear, that means we'll be re-notified of the next meeting and provided with information how to get onto Zoom?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Kathy, will all the butters and other interested parties be notified as well?
Yes, I have to do the whole thing again.
Don, every motion?
Uh, what's that?
I said, would you like a motion? I've already reviewed the minutes that Kathy sent. I don't know what they.
Which, which minutes are we talking about, John? The February minutes?
July, right?
Oh, we have February ones as well.
I have February 20th in front of me. Those were the paper minutes. And Kathy emailed something to us as well.
July 16th.
Okay, have you folks reviewed them?
I have.
Yes. Motion, motion to approve minutes as submitted.
Which?
I seconded the motion.
Which meant, which months, John? Both months?
July and February.
Motion has been made to approve the July minutes and the February minutes.
And seconded.
And Dave has seconded. If there's no further discussion, I'll ask for a vote. John, how do you vote?
Oliveri, aye.
David?
Aye.
And Foster votes aye. Okay, minutes are done. I do want to have a couple of quick minutes with the petitioner for 32 For Shore. Who is that, please?
Right. I need that, Kevin Fuller.
I took a look.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I took a look at the petition that you presented and the plans you presented. And I, I would advise you during the, my, my friendly suggestion to you is during the, this interval, while we're trying to figure out what to do for our next meeting with members, you have, you now have some time. I'd advise you to get some properly drawn up plans for the expansion that you propose.
Okay.
If you look at the bylaw, it does say that technically you're required to, to provide us with engineered drawings, prepared by a professional engineer. And you gave us a sketch which really does not show anything. There, there could be some contentious issues with your petition unless you really have a detailed plan of what you're asking to do.
Okay.
Fair enough?
Yes, yeah.
Do we have any other business tonight? Hearing none. I declare the meeting adjourned and I thank everybody for their patience and for attending. I'm really quite sorry for the way it turned out. It was not part of our plan.